Good morning, and we're going to have completely services for the commissioners meeting. Do we have any just to agenda? And happy comment? Why?
None of us.
The monsters? We just need right on there. And then this business? Okay, we're going to start right in then. There's order number 15-9-29-18, in matter of adopting 2015, 16, I just am making purchases. And the genetic procedures?
Actually Jacob's going to start.
So good morning, commissioners. What we want to propose is that we've actually prepared a presentation that kind of highlights some of the issues that you've seen in the budget package. What we'd like to do is go through the presentation and then have you deliberate on the first two agenda items that we did in the presentation. Is that what we're seeing? Great. So first and foremost, I want to recognize Larry, our former executive director, who's here to listen to the budget from this patient. And you all know Valerie as the deputy director. Who you don't know is Vicki Nutter, who is our finance manager. And I think I would start by saying that Valerie has really jumped in partnership with Larry before he retired and started to work on kind of new ways to look at the budget. And Vicki came on board earlier this summer and she's got a tremendous amount of experience and she really engaged our staff in a sort of a top up budget effort. You'll see that in the presentation. So what you're seeing today is you deliberate on our organizational budget and then HUD requires us to have a separate board order that approves our public housing budget separately. So that's the work we're doing. So this is one of our two main administrative buildings. One of the things I've mentioned is at some point we do need a new administrative building. So that'll be something that will keep the board apprised of what we have coming here. It is in an awesome location in Yalva. So our agency budget, as you know, starts October 1st and runs through September 30th. As I mentioned, each manager within the organization was responsible for preparing their own budget and something that was new this year. And we're going to present to you obviously revenues, expenses, capital, debt service, and then we have the slides on our reserve, which I think is fine interest. And then as I pointed out, the public housing budget is a separate budget and it's a HUD So as I mentioned, the management team were all responsible for building their own budget. That was something that they had done in the past and then want to appreciate Vicki in particular because she spent a lot of time with each manager, making sure that they understood what the process was. And really the division directors are needing to play a more active role in budgeting and budget monitoring. And I think you'll see housing division were presenting a budget to operate that at a loss. And we're needing both myself and Valerie and the public housing, or housing division director, to come up with ways to get that budget to move towards a break even point. Valerie, we'll talk about changes in our indirect cost allocation methodology and then a couple of new things to highlight. First, Jacobs Lane is a tax credit project that recently exited the tax credit partnership. So when that happens, it actually moves on to our agency budget. So that's a significant change. And then what we're planning to do next year is come to the board in August, about a month before we need the budget approval and actually do a work session on the budget. And then you would have time to give us any final directions for. And then one of the things that's really volatile, as you know, is federal funding. And HUD could make a major change in how they calculate our Section 8 administrative fees and that would be a potential big loss for us and they have to be really paid for staffing. So hopefully it doesn't play out as it's projected right now, but that could be a pretty big impact on us coming here. So you saw the slide when we did our work session earlier this month, but I just want you to have access and know who the managers are within the organization. I'm turning over to Valerie.
Hi. So you guys have probably all heard this phrase indirect cost allocation plan. You may have heard it called central service cost allocation plan, overhead cost allocation plan. What it all boils down to is that folks like Jacob and me and Vicki are not operating within any one program of HACSA, but we're sort of operating as overhead and the percent of our wages and benefits that are paid for by each individual program is the subject of the cost allocation plan. So our cost allocation plan was somewhat dated and granting agencies tend to be very picky about that because they want to pay for program services and not overhead services. And I had been, you know, in my two years as finance director, I had gotten like a lot of feedback from Lane County who administers several of our federal grants that I really needed to kind of update the cost allocation plan. So this year we did it and we've gotten a couple of really nice goodies out of that process, one of which is we have a more defensible overhead cost allocation plan. So if some auditor comes in, I'll feel really good about explaining how we allocate the overhead costs to the programs. And the other is that we've created cost centers. I wish I had one of those lights here. Let's see, is it on the next slide? No. We've created cost centers for things like the executive section, the finance section, the IT section, the HR section. So in the future, we'll be able to see year over year how much those central services cost to our organization. So the allocation methods allow for sharing of costs in a manner that's supportable to our funding sources and allow us to track how much it costs us to do these different functions. So I'm really happy about it, but it kind of upsets the comparison of last year's budget to this year's budget. So in several places where we see big differences, the explanation is that we revamped the cost allocation. The other thing that we did in this year's budget compared to last year's budget is we reshuffled the contents of our, the programs as they are assigned to our three major divisions. So our three major divisions are community services, housing, and Section 8. And each one had several specific programs assigned to it and we reshuffled those a little bit. So this year, and when you look at the totals for the community services division, you're going to be seeing HACSA corporate. There's no FTE assigned to this fund. And it contains an internal service fund for our fleet management. We have about 30 vehicles and so now we've got like an internal service fund set up for that. We buy new vehicles from this fund. We lease them out to the programs. Our HACSA wellness program, this is a requirement of our union contract and different things happen within the wellness program. Overall, it's not very significant, but it's accounted for here. And other general items that have no other home in a program are accounted for here, including that we have our summer picnic and our winter celebration. The weatherization activities are accounted for here and I've just given you some little metrics about the numbers of things that they do in people's homes and the number of FTE assigned. Development and asset management, we've already talked to you at length about those programs. So we're just reminding you that that includes our development pipeline and our asset management of the eight tax credit and seven outside managed properties. Ross is a federal program. It stands for resident, opportunity, and self-sufficiency. It supports 1.13 FTE, which is not very much, but that person works in all of our locations. They do food service, they coordinate with Food for Lane County, they do backpack programs for back to school for the kids and lots of other great things for the residents. FSS stands for family self-sufficiency. This is a federal grant that pays wage and benefit only for three FTE and those folks interact with the residents of public housing and Section 8 in a number of wonderful ways. The last four places are buildings that we actually own, but they house special populations who receive case management services from local nonprofit organizations. So in that sense, I listed them with community services next. The housing division includes public housing at the top, 708 units. The next four units are, I think we call them multifamily and they have slightly different regulations attached to them regarding what we can charge for rent and what expenses we can charge to them. And then the outside managed properties are listed below and those have third-party property managers. So if you looked at the other sheet in your handout, you would see that we have no FTE attached to those units. So the way that HACSA recovers costs from our part in supporting those units is a little bit different. And then the capital fund also lives in the housing division. The Section 8 division is pretty simple. It contains Section 8 and what we call VASH, that's Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, V-A-S-H, right? So in the Section 8, you might think it's odd that we have 2961 vouchers issued when we really only have 2,817 vouchers. And that's because HUD looks at this number over the course of a calendar year and not at any snapshot in time. So we were under leased at the beginning of calendar 2015 and in order to end the year at an average of 100% leasing, we had to kind of be over leased at the end of the year. So we're pretty happy about the way 2015 is shaping up. I can't remember if we mentioned to you that we had, we used a management technique called the breakthrough process where we identified 10 or 12 employees who really focused on this problem of us being under leased and they worked magic and brought us from like 90% of our vouchers being leased up to maybe 106 or 105%, which is where we are right now. So we're hoping to end the year where we're averaged out at 100% leasing, which will guarantee us receiving 100% funding for our Section 8 program next year. Problem is, we're going to start next year being over leased and we're going to have to rely on attrition to bring us back down to just about the 2816 so we can level out and continue to be 100% funded without having to dip into HACSA reserves to pay the rents. The VASH program is under leased. It was at 146 at the beginning of the fiscal year and we've managed to bring it up to 167. We're working very hard to lease out the rest of those 211. And in fact, we have another grant program of about $20,000 a year that we're able to use to help veterans with the little things that they need to become leased up, like paying old landlords that they forgot to pay or paying their security deposits or whatever it takes. So that's the Section 8 division.
Just quickly to interject, I mean, I really think the operation of 255 that's had and Mayor Kitty have sort of led, not a big reason why that number is going up. I would also point out that the $20,000 that Valerie mentioned that we're using as flexible funds to help veterans kind of comes through the county as well. So it's really a community effort and a partnership is why it's going to be successful.
All right. So slide 11 is the overall, the very highest level budget summary. There's another, there's a handout in your packet that looks almost exactly like this. And you'll notice that all the categories are going up from the 2015 budget to the 2016 budget. So I want to mention that while we worked very hard on each and every one of the, I don't know, 20 or so individual budgets that are rolled up here, this is what we think we need to run these programs. But there are three significant items that account for the $1 million increase in expenditures from the 2015 budget to the 2016. The first is the additional, the addition of the Jacobs Lane project, which is about $300,000. It was not in the HACSA budget last year. It's in there this year, so that's part of the increase. Another big piece is the development capital expense of almost $200,000. So last year, and in prior years, this doesn't, it just wasn't put into the HACSA budget because it's going to be completely reimbursed by the investor partner when the project becomes a go. And you know, for example, Baskin Village is now a go and we've been reimbursed for the $400,000 or $500,000 of pre-development expenses that we invested. So for whatever reason, that just wasn't included in the budget. But going forward, I'm sort of a budget purist and I put it in there and you'll be seeing pre-development expenses in the budget, even though they'll be reimbursed. And the last thing is that we're buying three vehicles this year. We've put together a fleet management committee and a replacement schedule for the 30 or so HACSA fleet vehicles and we're going to be buying three this year. So $75,000 is in the budget for those three. So that explains about half of the $1 million increase and the rest of the increase is simply spread among the programs due to inflation, whatever. Next slide. So this just tells you what I'm going to be talking about in the next few minutes. Slide 13 is a pretty high level breakdown of the revenue over the basic four time periods. So if you're looking at county budgets or city budgets, you're always going to see, you know, two years ago what the actuals were, last year what the budget was, what the projected for last year's budget is, and what we're proposing for the coming year. So this is a pretty conventional budget presentation in these four time periods. So the federal grants includes the HAP, that's the housing assistance payment. It's the biggest line item in our budget. It's what HUD gives us to pay all the Section 8 rents. The Section 8 admin fee, which is normally around $2 million. So the sum of those two is about $16 million of that $21 million. The public housing operating subsidy, the weatherization grant, shelter plus care grants, around $500,000. The Ross grant, can't remember, and the FSS grant, those are all in the federal funding line. We're concerned?
Did you say Ross grant? R O S?
Ross, yes, that's the resident opportunity self-sufficiency, the 1.13 FTE. We're worried about the Section 8 admin fee, that it might drop significantly and I'll come back to that on slide 14. The rents are from all of our properties. The increase reflects the addition of Jacobs Lane to the mix of rental properties. Interest, very low, very volatile. The reason FY15 budget is so big is that that included accrued interest on soft debt from tax credit properties. So I think we just didn't really spend a lot of time thinking about whether our budget was going to be an accrual based budget or a cash based budget. The soft, the interest on soft debt on the tax credit properties is the last thing those tax credit properties pay to HACSA. They pay all their operating expenses, they pay their mortgages, they pay their hard debt and if there's any money left over, they can make payments to HACSA on the soft debt that was accumulated when the tax credit properties were set up. So we have it on our books, we feel like we're going to collect it eventually. We accrue the full amount every year, but the collections lag behind significantly. So we didn't, we didn't include it in the FY16. Where am I? Other revenue includes development fees at $1 million for 2016. So that's why it's quite a bit higher than 2015. And any kind of inter-fund activity is included in the other revenue sections. Next slide. So coming back to this Section 8 admin fee, HUD had a methodology and it basically boiled down to so many dollars per voucher per month. So if we had 2,000 vouchers out there in a month and they were paying us $50 per voucher, you would just do the math and that's what our admin fee would be. And their methodology included something about where we were geographically in the country. So you know, in New York City, it would be more than it is in Eugene, Oregon. And for some reason, they decided to reexamine their methodology and throw like a whole bunch of different elements into the mix. And nationwide, some housing authorities are coming out ahead under the new methodology and some housing authorities are coming out behind. And unfortunately for HACSA, we're like coming out almost as the worst of all. If they implement the new methodology with no tweaks, we will probably lose about 25% of our admin fee, which will be a significant hit on our Section 8 budget. However, it's just uncertain. They haven't decided. They're in like the public comment period on the new methodology. So it's very difficult for us to budget when we don't know what HUD is going to do. They sent out a memo to all the housing authorities saying, here's your worst case scenario. If we implement the new methodology, this is what your admin fee will be. So we weren't sure if we should try to budget with the worst case methodology or some point in between. So we decided to split the baby in half and we just budgeted at a point in the middle between the worst case methodology and our current admin fee. So we're going to have to stay abreast of what's going on with that and be able to make changes to our Section 8 budget. However, as Jacob will talk to you later, we have a very substantial Section 8 admin reserve as a cushion to what happens this year. So it will give us reaction time.
Just a question regarding HUD. Which level of HUD are you discussing with? Where is the concern? Is it at the federal level or at DC or at more? So our primary conversations have been with the Portland Field Office. The Portland Field Office is directed, the public housing and Section 8 side by a woman named Lori Ross and she's been down at one point. She recently came from DC and she's an exceptional field office director. So we feel like she has direct lines of communication back to DC. I do think that there could be a point where advocacy from the commissioners could be helpful. And when that point comes, I would engage with the commissioners and Alex obviously to, you know, determine what would be the best way to pursue that advocacy.
Does Lori report in Marquette also?
She is not a kind of... Lori's boss is not in DC, I believe Lori's boss is in California.
I'm sure it's not the same.
As Mark?
Yep.
Next slide. So the next major section of the budget is personal services. The 3.5 million projected is less than the 3.9 budget for FY15, probably due to vacancies. We had a tremendous amount of turnover at HACSA this year. In fact, we're all scratching our heads. Part of it is due to baby boomers getting close to retirement. Part of it is due to the fact that we're doing a lot of promotions from within, but our HR department of one has been exceptionally busy this year. And I think the drop, you know, the fact that we're not going to spend as much as we thought has something to do with all that turnover. The increase for 2016 covers 2.28 FTE. One FTE is in IT. We had an IT department of one to support 90 employees. We felt that we were a little vulnerable there and so now we have a second IT person. It's somewhat of a succession plan and somewhat just of a backup plan so the first guy can be sick or go on vacation. The other FTE is in weatherization. We're proposing to add a fourth energy auditor. Our energy services manager is showing a lot of talent at bringing state money in to improve HACSA properties and so he needs an additional energy auditor to run those jobs.
Is that Steve Doyle?
It is Steve. So other than that, the 2.28 is the net of fractional changes up and down. Somebody's dropping from a full FTE to a half time and somebody's moving from a three-quarter time to a full time. So it's just fractional changes. Materials and services, let's see, our comments are, you know, below here are meant to stress our impact on the local economy. We spend significant sums with local vendors for supplies and services. What I would like to point out is the decrease in services from the 14 actual at 1.3 million to the 16 budget at just a million, a little over a million. This too is the result of another breakthrough team who was, who had the assignment of cutting the operating costs of public housing. So they came up with a lot of ideas that are kind of, we were hoping they would come up with things we could do overnight, but they came up with more ideas that we could do over the long term. So we're going to be doing more kind of service work on our properties with our own staff rather than contracting out and that's what you're seeing there. Next. Capital expenditures. So I think the 15 projected is a little low here and I regret that. You know, we worked on the budget over a period of time and the way that we develop budget projections is we say, well, if we're in June and nine months of the year have expired, we probably spent nine twelfths of what we're going to spend over the year. And as it turned out, a lot of our capital expenses were stacked up towards the end of the year. So our math didn't exactly work right. We're probably going to spend more like $650,000 on capital in FY15. And in FY16, that 1.4 is a combination of the HUD cap grant for public housing funds and also substantial work on the properties in the development pipeline. So for debt service, this section is not so volatile, right? You get a mortgage, you got it for 30 years. We see a little increase in the, a little increase, I can't read my own writing here, for the Oaks debt. Right. So on principal and interest between 14 and 16, I don't even know. What we actually have added is a mortgage for the property out at 14th and Oak. And we paid off a couple of mortgages, one being 14 pines. The replacement reserve contributions are taking a significant jump in FY16 and that's related to 14 pines also. And when you pay off a mortgage, generally then the agreements that are in place say that now you have to start making replacement reserve contributions. So we've got an unusually high replacement contribution on that property of $85,000, which you will see in the details. So that really concludes the very high level functional analysis. You can probably imagine how much work lies behind these summaries. And next year, as Jacob mentioned, we're going to probably try and do a budget document that's a lot more like your county budget document with a full page or two of information about each program. And that would be a month ahead of time. So we'd have deliberation, we'd have time to include your feedback in our final proposal.
So as I'm... What this budget allows us to do is start to look at our divisions at a much more granular level and really determine the divisions that are breaking even or in the black, if you will, and also divisions that are operating in red. Our housing division is operating significantly in red. And the reason for that, the primary reason for that is that the HUD subsidy provided is well below what HUD says it takes to run these properties. So over the next year, we'll be looking much more closely at the housing division and there's a couple of ways that we think we can increase the revenue and increase the expenses. I would say also that these buildings are tremendously old and we talked about that in our work session earlier this month. So we have a macro job of what I call repositioning the portfolio and we'll come back at future work sessions and talk about what that can do. So what we wanted to do is talk briefly about reserves. And essentially in the organization, we do have significant reserves. And we have them broken out here by both different properties and different sort of functional areas or divisions. And I won't go through these in detail, but what we wanted to sort of bring to your attention is that we need to look closely at our reserves and frankly, they need to go up over time. And the primary strategy that we have to do that is through our real estate development and developer fees produce unrestricted cash that we can fill up our reserves with. And then there's also some things that we can do with debt structure as well that can be helpful in this situation. This is the Section 8 reserves and there's kind of two different buckets of Section 8 reserves. The first bucket is the two columns that say either HUD held or HACSA held. So historically, HACSA held housing assistance payment reserves and those are really important. So historically, HACSA held housing assistance payment reserves, and those are really important because as Valerie talked about, there's, um, there's a complex management task related to leasing, and you can kind of over-lease and under-lease, and you need to have reserves, basically, so that if you're over-leased, there's money to pay landlords. The other reason why there's two distinct columns here is that historically, HACSA's been able to hold those reserves, but HUD has determined that it wants to hold the reserves for us. So that's why it zeroed out in September, or 2015 and 2016, and HUD does have some reserves for us. The other reserve is admin reserves. Those are relatively high right now, but that's also another place that we can go if we need new vehicles for our section inspectors, for example, which we do, and then also it's another reserve in case over leasing occurs. And just in general, um, it's a $14 million a year program. $800,000 for a $14 million program is not as much reserves. And then public housing also has reserves, and this is the primary revenue source for the program operating in the negative, and we really need to get, over this next year, we'll be looking closely at that division, and then coming up with ways to get it closer and cheaper.
So I'm going to turn it over to Vicki, and she's going to talk about the public housing budget.
So public housing, this is a picture of the, the offices we filled over in Fairview, and so that's where they're housed. So what we have in here is primarily two areas. There's the public housing asset management projects, or AMPs, which are their sticks out, and then there's the central office cost center. And so in your handouts that you received, there, it gives you a list of the information that you had in there. We talked about there is a new allocation method used in the 16 budget, and then the AMPs are projected to have a net loss of just over $360,000 for the year. And then the central office, uh, cost center is projected to almost break even with just a $2,000 loss. And so this is the format that Valerie had talked about in terms of the standard format, where we actually broke out the pieces, so you can kind of see historically where it has been in terms of looking at that. And we tried to keep these numbers as true as possible in terms of being able to compare from year to year, even though the allocation method has changed. This is the central office cost center, and this, due to the new allocation method, went from basically two, basically two cost centers being added together into eight separate ones, so now we can actually track by function. So there'll be an executive budget, there'll be an IT budget, that kind of stuff. And then we're also going to have a separate budget for the Day Island Building and the Fairview Building. So somebody says, how much does it cost to run the Day Island Building? Jacob can say, this much money, so. And again, this is just the cash flow, showing where, where, how that's scheduled to pencil out for the year. Okay, Jim?
So again, what we're asking for today is obviously any questions that you have, but we are seeking approval for our organizational budget through the first order and then the second order is approval of the public housing budget. There's also the rental assistance demonstration program that we talked at length about in the work session. That could, there, there could be revenues from the sales of scattered sites in the next fiscal year. If that comes to fruition, we would do kind of a budget amendment, because that would be a significant revenue source for us. And so just as I kind of look ahead at the organization, Valerie, we need to continue to look for revenue opportunities and expenditure reductions. Management will be responsible for the performance of their budget, both positive and negative. We need to continue our efforts to make sure that our housing assets are in good condition, and that includes just effective capital project management. We'll be working on a plan to get our reserves back up to higher levels, and Valerie and Vicki will be doing some kind of best practices, look at other housing authorities to see what reserve levels we would recommend. And then we'll be working actively in the housing division to get to a breaking point. And then, you know, kind of beyond fiscal year 16, we are going to need to look at diversifying our revenue sources and reducing our reliance on the public housing and Section 8 subsidies. I have a handful of ideas that will be pursuing and presenting to you. And a longer-term possibility, given that our housing division is operating in the red, is that we could look at getting out of the public housing business entirely, which would mean switching the subsidy from public housing to project-based Section 8. So we'd serve the same number of people, we'd just move to a more stable funding platform. And again, that would be details that I would bring back in the work session and talk to you about how that would work.
So that's a couple of discoveries. Yes, I, I, one is, on your very last point, would you be considering the public housing, giving a public housing person a Section 8 voucher, and then they were applying to housing, or would you convert, like, the public housing buildings into Section 8? Do they stay in the same building?
So that's a good question. So I'll just use Park Two Terrace as an example. So that's on second and high here in Eugene, 150 units, and it houses elderly and people with disabilities. So it's built, you know, 60 years ago, and it's a building that needs a big infusion of capital. So what you can do is apply to HUD with the rental assistance demonstration program, and you could do a tax credit and take loans out on that property, and then switch the subsidy from public housing to project-based Section 8. So we're not intending to give people vouchers. We would attach the subsidy to the building.
You're considering, you're, you're selling the scattered sites, and the money is on the HACSA. Can that be used, will that be put into reserves, or on which level?
So that's, that's an excellent question. That's one that Jay asked about in the work session. And as we presented in the work session, we think over the next five years, we need $35 million to approve our assistance portfolio. So part of those proceeds would go into fixing up our assets, and part of those proceeds would also go in reserves.
So you have the option to spend it.
That money is unrestricted, and we'll spend it if that is appropriate. So, um, format-wise, what were you seeing in the board? And all the various budgets we see, it's total resources, total requirements. So I'm not seeing, you know, beginning fund balance easily, other than, other than what we're supposed to do here, anti-fund balance, required reserves. And that, that's, that's the reason we see it format-wise, and those two things will both add up here. And that, that's what I'm, I'm getting to see, and so, format-wise, I'd like to try and see something a little bit closer to the standard.
The closest that we come to that is in the, um,
And I've got that page up.
Yeah, that's, that's the closest that we come. And at HACSA, we weren't really good at tracking the, the beginning reserves, but I completely am in agreement with you about that format, and we'll be moving in that direction.
So I'm glad you mentioned the, the Section 8, Section 8 industry cross methodology. When it comes time, let us know, you know, if we can advocate for maybe, you know, whatever is causing that to be the worst case to maybe eliminate that factor, or however we can do as, as board politically, whether it becomes part of our united front. You know, that's really an important aspect.
Can you explain real quick, you mentioned in your other revenue, and you mentioned a couple times, Jell for these. Maybe I'm just not familiar with terms. Is that something paid like SDC, or is that, you know?
That's a really good question. So I'll use BASCAM Village as an example. So when we structured the financing for that project, we included a significant developer fee back to HACSA, and it was in roughly a million dollars. And what that does is it pays for the development team that we have in HACSA and the capital projects team. And then beyond those costs, we have to off a lot of times front redevelopment costs, but there is a return back to the agency when we put those deals in place.
So it's basically a piece of the, the individual development's budget to reimburse the HACSA for within a step. Just want to make sure I understood what that was.
And just to really, so we don't get a million dollars, like, right when we close on the financing, Dr. Beck, it'll be over a long period of time.
Yeah. Like most construction laws, they, they parse them out all the time, but banks are pretty stingy about that. So, and then the other item, you mentioned that, you know, looking at the reserves and all that stuff, but I'd also talk to the auditors about what their recommendations are for the reserves, not just the best management practices of our agency. I listen to my auditors a lot when they start talking about what the first reserve is for the specific fund. I was kind of surprised you didn't feel the Section 8 was enough, even though that was at least 5%. It was worth more than 5%. Usually, you're shooting between 5 and 10 for the first. It may be that there's a lot of risk in that fund, and the auditors would tell you it's really 15, so.
The reason why I said that is because we, we send out over a million dollars a month to landlords, and when I hear about things like government shutdowns, I worry about arguably paying landlords if the government.
And that's where the auditor may say, there's a significant risk there, you need to have over a month, or something like that, so I appreciate that. But that covered most of what I looked at as we were doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I wanted to point out, well, first I'll say, Valerie makes a great job on returning the real understatement, returning the few slides there, all the work that goes into those few slides. It's, it's pretty tremendous. I have one quick comment on, on that, but I first wanted to mention that, you know, when I was back on the Udean City Council, my third time, we, I spent quite a bit of time on a BASSA village, walking around, and, you know, HACSA manages money, and they manage properties, but they also manage public image and public perception. And that's something that really often goes underappreciated, the job that you do with folks who naturally and normally, and of course, have events come out to oppose your project. And as I sit here, I'm looking at a picture of Jacob Lane, and looking at what a HACSA, what HACSA project looks like, and it's, I'm in a stone, and they just did a BASSA village. And I spent a great deal of time sitting in very formal audit organs at Sheldon House, and entertaining people in my office, my tiny little office over at the Udean City Council, talking about why we should be doing that project. And one by one, you took the, the comments and concerns, you took the comments and concerns, and looking at Larry a little bit right now, to see what was happening, and you address it across the board, where there are no sidewalks, or there was no transit, there's no work on transit, so all these houses are, you run down, broken down cars in there, well, no, that's never, ever going to happen. And, you know, when we compare, I'm looking at Jacob Lane right now, when we compare HACSA projects after 10 or 15 years on them in service, compare them to public, to privately-owned projects, HACSA invariably looks better. The landscaping is well kept, the houses are well kept, the paint is kept up, the roofing looks good, and, you know, across the board, you do a superb job of managing public perception just huge, because the folks that were serving in HACSA have it difficult in time, there's nothing to do, but I have five neighbors, and once your project is built, you don't see neighborhood thriving right now. In fact, most recently, I was at a, at a Northeast Neighbor's, Northeast Neighbor's meeting, and they were praising the BASSA, praising the work that's been done in the BASSA, and the very same people who were in that, looking at us and talking, you know, it's not an envy thing, it's just not right. And by and large, you know, if you were, if you were there, those, and Jacob, I think you probably sat at the BASSA, there were, I don't know, 300 or 400 people in the building, and they all had to say something, and they all had other things to say, but you addressed it. The same thing is happening with, with Forte and Oak, not Forte and Oak, and same thing, the neighborhood, neighbors are coming out, and that's a joint project that sponsors, and by and large, you're going to have a great-looking project that serves the people there very well, and it also serves the neighborhood very well. And years from now, 20 years from now, you'll see a beautiful product that will actually be, it's in very, very nice. If you don't, if you go to Jacob's Lane online, there's a 360 view of it, it's, it's a neighborhood that anyone could let through it, and, I mean, it really is beautiful, well done. The, a part of the public perception is being 100% truthful, upfront, and accurate, and I wanted to congratulate you on looking at allocations, you know, being, having worked with the nonprofits with Lake County, I looked at our allocations and compare them with other nonprofits, and people understand their allocation. You know, they, they, they put less money into admin than really is. I'd like to praise you for making certain that you do very much of that, that admin costs are allocated throughout the departments in, in an accurate fashion, because when people look at that and compare you, should they ever compare you, it's carrying an avenue of difference, and they want to see how you're looking against the, the, the 103s. You know, it's really important that you're accurate, that you're upfront, and that there is no discrepancy, and no reason for people to question the reporting that you did. So I want to congratulate you all once again. Great team, a great team, you left me high. It's, I'm really, personally, in my involvement with HACSA as a, as a member of this board, I'm very proud to be a part of your association. Thank you for the work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm going to go back to the issue, the issue, you made the comment that Lane County would be hit hard based on the, the formula, the formula change. How many other counties in Oregon have housing authorities?
There's 22 different housing authorities across the state.
And are other counties feeling the same effects as Lane County by itself? What, or do you have any of that information on that? And I, and the reason why I'm asking that question, I want to go back to something Commissioner Bozzi stated, that if this stuff we can put on a united front, as far as going back to DC and talking to our delegation, I think that'll be key, but would it make it even more important is if there's other counties in the same vote? So if we could coordinate that, work together, I think what you'll find is that if you have a stronger voice, not just Lane County, but if you have multiple counties going back and saying, we're, we're getting hit on this, we need to be working with our delegations. For instance, I don't know if Oklahoma County's in that vote, or I'm assuming Washington County, Plaquemus County have housing authorities too, and if they're in that same vote, but they obviously have relationships with three members up north that we don't necessarily have that are in key positions as well. And so that's why I'm asking that question. So maybe if you could answer that quickly on, if there's other counties in the state that are in a similar boat that we are, and how we might build to coordinate that.
Can I just give you a little historical?
Sure.
So the, Larry, come to the table.
Larry, can you come to the table? We'll clear your ears and bring you up. Sorry, Larry.
So the Section 8 admin, the, um, historically, Lane County has the highest ones in the board. And it was arbitrarily based on the fair market rent to the unit in 1990. And it's just been increased by cost of living. So we have the highest, the other one that's, the other housing authority that's cut is Jackson County, they're very close to us. Some of the other ones, I'm not sure, they may even get increased, but clearly, we knew this the years, that we had the highest one, we're very fortunate to have it. This new, uh, way of computing goes into effect, it's not substantially, I don't know how much it can do that, frankly. I'm, I'm surprised that it's, it'd be implemented soon. HUD takes a long time to do anything. You've been working on it a while. It's, it's a problem. Fortunately, you do have the reserves, that just makes sense.
So Madam Chair, just a quick follow-up. I'm just actually requesting, Jacob, that we have coordination of Jackson County, and they're, they're in a similar situation, because their congressman just happens to be, you know, high in leadership, and, and so in, in the House. Even with the resignation, I think he's going to remain a very strong label in, in leadership, and it'd just be interesting just to kind of, if we could coordinate that with key members of our private delegation, that would be, and just, and just let them know, this is the vote we're in. You're right, Larry, maybe nothing can come out of it, but I think it's important that we use our voice a bit on it. we use our voices at all this moment, so. So I appreciate the historical piece, I think maybe having that connection with Jackson County. So I think that's really would be maybe a way to take a look at this, and see where we go from there, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Larry has heard this question asked many times by me, that is, what does the picture look like from the federal standpoint? I'm looking at HUD under attack over public housing residents who earn too much, cutting the HUD budget, cutting the budget for public housing. What is your sense of whether we're going to have a budget, and if it's set up, and how much money we're going to be getting? In other words, is this a, is this an ongoing attack on people who need help? And I just wanted to kind of get your realistic perspective of what's going on. My sense is, it's not good, but.
You know, I've worked in the steel for 18 years, and Larry obviously worked in the steel for longer than I did, and I think we both attest that we think that there's been a continual decline over the years, and because of the way ours works, some years it's more volatile than others, some years it's more negative than others. After sequestration, we did see a slight uptick in subsidy levels, which was a good, really good thing for us. But to be honest, I really can't give you a specific answer. I think what we have to do as an organization is decrease our dependence on federal funds, diversify our revenue streams, and be nimble. And when the time is right, as Sid's recommending, we advocate as Lane County, and we advocate in partnership with other counties and cities. So if I see anything that's, you know, that's new, or that's dramatically different than just normal HUD funding volatility, the Commissioner will be the first to know.
Second question I have is, do you want us to move on the budget approval, or do you want to wait until you present the operating budget? You started out saying you wanted us to act on it at the same time, so.
Yeah, we've actually presented both budgets, so we're ready for a motion.
But then I'll move to approve order 1509-2901H in the matter of adopting a deficit to 16 budget to make appropriations.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, any more questions?
So I'd also move approval of order 1509-2902 in the matter of approving the public housing operating budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th through December 16.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from bringing deliberations or votes on items C, D, and E, as it has gone to my attention that it's recommended that SGP be the contractor for the project, and I certainly was pressing, so.
Okay, so then we're moving on to order number 1509-2901H in the matter of authorizing the formation of Oaks Manager LLC and Oaks Support for the Oaks Department.
So this can be relatively brief. This motion is required by our funder, which is the Orange Housing and Community Services Agency, and it's just a document that shows that we are aware of fair housing law, we will comply with that law, and we've passed similar orders for past projects, like past one.
So move approval of order 1509-2903H in the matter of approving the Oaks Management LLC for the Oaks Department, 14th quarter of housing development for next year.
Second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So that's six with Commissioner Stewart, sorry, he was on cue, so I can't talk. Okay, now moving on to order number 1509-2901H in the matter of authorizing the formation of Oaks Manager LLC and Oaks Support for the purpose of developing Oaks Support.
So similar to the prior order, this is something that we do every time we have a new real estate development project, and what this does is it authorizes us to set up a limited liability corporation necessary to execute this one action, and it also establishes both Valerie and I as signors for that, I'll also pass a similar motion for Bascom.
So I'll move approval of order 1509-2904H in the matter of authorizing the formation of Oaks Manager LLC and the Oaks 14 LLC for the purpose of developing the 14th quarter of housing development.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so six.
You're supposed to say all opposed.
All opposed? All right, if we have any opposition, we should take that, I'm sorry. So that's six with Commissioner Stewart. So then we're going to move on to order 1509-2901H in the matter of approving Chats, 15-dash-D dash 008 Architectural Services Agency, 15-dash-C 008-9 Construction Management General Contractor Services for the Oaks Support.
So again, you've approved similar orders for prior development projects, we've gone through all they require, RFD and TMGC processes for both of these proposed contractors. I would say that we are just delighted, because our projects not only serve low-income citizens and folks in this instance that are coming out of corrections, but we also contribute to the local economy in a very significant way. And I'm really pleased to recommend that we contract with Burks and Delaney Architecture and with Essex. I think there's a typo on this, actually. So there's a typo on the memo from us, but the board order itself is accurate, but Essex is the contractor that we're proposing for the Oaks at 14. One of the things that I'm excited about is that we are currently under contract with Miley for Bascom, we got the chambers construction for our project in Glenwood and our 600 project downtown, and then Essex will be supporting our work at the Oaks at 14. So we are employing a number of different contractors, and they all do excellent work.
So I'll move approval of order 1509-2905H in the matter of approving contracts for architectural and construction management general contractor services for the Oaks at 14.
Second, any discussion?
I'd just like to say this, real quick, this is really kind of a momentous point in this, we're actually going into construction of this project. This is a great project for Lane County in a lot of ways, I mean, our board, not only the housing authority, but as board commissioners, is talking a lot about homelessness, recidivism, dealing with, you know, the intersection of mental health, criminal justice system. This is a project that's designed around, you know, some of the people that are hardest to house, which are people with a record, and also, you know, some of those folks that have other issues to deal with, and this is just a piece that we add to our housing stock, and it's a great project for operational sponsors. And I think it's going to provide this county with another tool to adjust and, you know, keep people off the street and out of the criminal justice system.
I want to, to, I'm someone, and others that have done, who advocates for a home show, and kind of just have one, and as someone who's lived in the mission for quite a while, I recognize that this is one step, to separate all the people who work for our homeless and Indian Act, this takes care of, and it builds a significant number of people. So yeah, it takes people who might have been living at the mission, or living on the street, or whatever, now having, I mean, a real step, a real chance to move to the building, like, for a while, and I'm glad this has been a great aspect of the work.
Thank you, Madam Chair, you know, and thank Commissioner Bozovic for pointing out the, and Commissioner, and pointing out the obvious benefits of the project. A couple of things on it, we had a presentation from our behavioral health department last week, and it pointed out that greater than 50% of people who are sort of in jails, in prisons, excuse me, have behavioral health issues. Almost presume that someplace around that number of people who have been discharged, released from jails have a similar number. And I believe that the project that we're talking about has a great opportunity for the people who may be coming out of the prison system with behavioral health issues, who receive service for the, receive treatment and counseling for the behavioral health services. So as we move forward with this project, there's going to continue to be some discussion from the neighborhood. It's been ongoing, and it's took a lot of time, once again, to certain, the son of the, the church, over the years, church of high school, and the neighbors came out with lots and lots of questions, lots and lots of comments, those questions are ongoing, and many of them are still, in some folks' minds, unanswered. It's important that we go forward and make sure that people in this, and the absolute true benefits that's going to be associated with this housing project, based upon the value of the people who are coming out of the penal system, need housing, they need housing, and be when there are places secure and stable housing, the terms of recidivism is far decreased, and also the chance of receiving services and treatment for their behavioral health issues, which, as we've been pointing out, is over and over again behavioral health, one of the main causes of sort of safety calls, not mentioning medical bills. So it's important that we move forward and make sure that people fully understand the true beneficial nature of this project, not just putting people in houses, protecting the entire neighborhood and the entire community, and serving the people who live there, who won't live in there in a far greater fashion than they would be being discouraged throughout the community. Well, thank you very much.
Can briefly point out that yesterday, Shar and I presented to Troy and his advisory committee, and you talk about the behavioral health needs of folks coming out of prison, and there's also behavioral health needs for folks coming out of homelessness. And so as we link healthcare with affordable housing, and I really think we stand to make dramatic investments to the citizens more, and I really want to just thank you, Shar, because you're a champion. We're starting to get traction. How do you feel?
Well, I don't know, can we mention, I guess we should finish this before we go, actually, yeah. So, all in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? Okay, which is Chair Stewart, six up, okay. So, we have an executive session in other business, because that's one, I'll mention about the grant, the received from Troy, and it's for John and Scott, and it's kind of a, the Troy and the.
The Troy and the.
So we're all going to be watching together on that, and we're just right in the very beginning stages of how we're going to do, but we didn't see the grant. So there'll be opportunities for education, and healthcare workers that will be helping in housing, in the community centers, and sites of community, and, depending on what causes.
And they'll be countywide, so.
Right.
Just in that one, so.
This initial grant was, it was limited, and so we're targeting at one property and one issue.
Right, right. So we're on our way to doing that. Anyway, if there's more business, then this can be suggested.
Right downstairs, a couple of minutes. They said it wouldn't last.
Mostly, you know, day 16.
Are we ready, everybody?
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners to Order for Tuesday, September 29th, 2015, and our first item is adjustments to the agenda, and I'll note that we do not have an executive session today, any other adjustments to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. I have one person signed up for public comment, Joe Kossawick.
Yes, I do.
And if you'll state your name and where you're from for the record, and I'll, and you'll have your three minutes.
Thank you, Joe.
You can pass them down if you want.
My name is Joe Kossawick, Markola, they can be contacted at 10 Box 1041, Markola Post Office, 97454. Last meeting, there was some questions after I did the presentation on homeless students, and I think the first, one of the first ones was the definition, and the definition is provided by the McKinney-Vento Act, which is about 28 years old, I understand, and it basically says there, it means individuals who lack a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence. I think you were looking for numbers, and I'm not so sure where, in terms of how many days students have missed class. I don't know if you have to track those down to each individual district, or the state collects that or not, but I think there's another chart in here that explained it's just not one night. Moving to the map again, where you wanted to see percentages, the next page, I added the percentages by.
offenders who have been released from state prisons and state correctional institutions. And we have a traditional housing program that we just approved today in our housing meeting. So, we are doing things that address certain elements of this, but you're pointing out, and I think it's wise to remember, these are kids that are homeless. So, I appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, free and reduced lunches in schools has been around a long time. The Chapter One program that is subsidized by the federal government, it allows for schools with the populations of seventy percent or greater qualifying for free and reduced lunch program to the entire school receives free and reduced lunch. A part of that is to reduce the stigmatism that is attached when you go to that line, you go to that line. So, at Fairfield Elementary and Malabon Elementary Schools in the Bethel District, we just opened two brand-new schools, beautiful, can still smell the paint, still smell the carpet. Every single kid in those schools gets free lunch and free breakfast. Now, that's great because it demonstrates that there are kids who are going to school, and they're not going to school hungry, whether or not they woke up in a home. Many of them woke up in a travel trailer or something less accommodating than a travel trailer. But significantly, the kids who receive the free and reduced lunches, during my years at Food Lane County, it really became a shock to me that kids didn't want summer vacation and kids didn't want winter break because they don't get free and reduced lunch at school during summer vacation and during winter break. So, we can talk about what happens during the school year, but it's significant that kids are hungry year-round. Food Lane County has a grade program, about seventy lunch and breakfast sites throughout the county that they provide lunches to. But really, it underlies the fact that we have kids who are hungry. And any time that we have kids that are hungry, then we haven't done our job yet. No elected official, no public servant has done their job as long as there is a hungry kid. And thanks for pointing these numbers out, the numbers we've been aware of for a long, long time. And, you know, the poverty numbers are, you can dig down the deepest into poverty numbers anyplace in the United States on the grade school service block. And to get right down, the requirements that are in place for reporting at the grade school level gives us the very closest areas that need the greatest level of help. And I want to thank you for bringing these maps, they're great maps. I'll work with you as deeply as you'd like. Bethel School District and Fordshire both doing a superb job of addressing hunger. And this morning, we heard about the Ross Program in Haxa. Part of Ross is giving kids backpacks, backpacks of food on the days that they don't go to school, weekends, for instance, when you don't go to school. And if you're on free and reduced lunch and you don't go to school, you're not going to get free lunch or free breakfast. So, the backpacks help do that, help bridge that gap. But it doesn't get us off the hook for making certain that kids aren't hungry. And as long as we have hungry kids, we've not done our job. Thank you.
Any other remonstrance or responsible comments? Seeing none, then we'll move on to emergency business. We have one item of emergency business, Order 1509-2911, in the matter of authorizing the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the documents transferring the Turtle Flats property. And we have Mr. Chaney here.
Commissioner Bozovich, Commissioners. This is a housekeeping item, but it's an important housekeeping item. You'll recall that you've had before you a couple of memos and orders regarding the Turtle Flats property. And last week, we set it up so that we could close on the sale of the property this week. But neither I nor the manager involved knew that the county administrator wouldn't be here this week to execute the documents. And consequently, this order instead authorizes the Chair of the Board of Commissioners to execute those documents. The actual purchase auction agreement runs through September 30th of 2015. So, the intent is to close on this property today so that it can be recorded tomorrow before the option expires.
Any questions for staff on this? Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I've moved approval of Order 15-09-29-11.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Then we'll move on to consent calendar, and these are routine items the Board of Commissioners will enact in a single motion. If anyone wants to see detail on those, they can go to our website and click on the view material for each item. Do I have a motion on consent calendar? The approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, moving on to Public Works, Item A, Order 1509-2909, in the matter of electing whether or not to hear an appeal of a hearings official's decision denying a request for a verification of nonconforming use to allow placement of a manufactured dwelling for a student housing as Phase Three of a 2004 land use decision, PA 509-PA 0406222, approving a school building and two dormitories in an exclusive farm use zone pursuant to LC 162511. And I believe we have Deanna Wright here. So, I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Good morning, Commissioners. The item before you today is an appeal of a hearings official decision denying a request for a verification of a nonconforming use and deciding whether or not to elect to hear the item. The planning director approved the decision, but the request for PA 14-05775 was reversed by the hearings official. So, for some background on the item, the applicant-appellant on the application is Laurelwood Academy. The subject property is identified as Tax Lot 304, Township 18, Range 2, Section 25. The 20-acre property is located approximately one mile southeast of the rural community of Jasper, southwest of Jasper-Lil Road, and approximately 2.6 miles from the Springfield Urban Growth Boundary. The property is zoned exclusive farm use zone. On May 23rd, 2005, the applicant obtained approval for a special use permit under File PA 04-06222 for a three-phase construction of a school that included two 20-room dormitories and a classroom administrative building. The current application was submitted for a request for a vested rights determination to finish the construction of a multi-phase school project. The planning director subsequently modified the request to be an application for a verification of a nonconforming use and determined that the applicant had a right to complete the multi-phase construction project and approved the application on May 15th of this year. On May 27th, the decision was appealed to the Lane County Hearings Official by a Land Watch Lane County. On August 6th, 2015, the hearings official issued a denial of the request, and the applicant appealed the decision on August 18th of this year. On deciding whether or not to hear the appeal, the decision criteria are directed by Lane Code, Chapter 14.600, Subsection 3. There are four separate criteria, and staff found that it met two of them. These were explained in the staff memo, but I'm going to briefly summarize them for you now. The planning director believes the issue is of countywide significance because the approved use authorized in 2004, land use decision was for a school. The land use authorization was initiated and substantially implemented with the application for building permits and the school within the two-year approval period. The planning director also believes there's a need for board review on this. The question of whether the structures in a phase development request needs to be completed rather than begun before the expiration of the permit needs guidance from the board. So, the relevant elect-to-hear criteria are Lane Code, Chapter 14.600, Subsection 3A, countywide significance, and B, policy guidance. Therefore, the planning director recommends review. However, the board is not compelled to hear the issue case, excuse me, compelled to hear the case just because the standard is met. If you agree with the hearings official analysis, you can choose to expressly adopt the hearings official decision as your own under Option 2, or you can approve the hearings official decision and let Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, decide whether the hearings official interpretation is correct, which is Option 3. If it is the board's choice for Option 2 or 3, staff can return the revised order. If the board decides to hear the appeal, staff recommends the board direct the applicant-appellant to submit a formal timeline waiver on the Lane County form. The applicant-appellant requests that the board does hear the appeal. The decision is at the board's discretion. This concludes my staff report at this time. Thank you.
So, I have one. You know, whenever we get an elect-to-hear before us, one of my first questions is, if the board takes action, is that action most likely just going to be appealed up to the next level anyway? And whether it's correct for the board to be hearing this? And then the second question that comes to my mind is, are we, what we're asking to be determined, you know, is a policy question, is it truly policy or is it a legal interpretation? If it's a legal interpretation, I don't believe the board's the right place to be doing that. I mean, we kind of got into that with some past decisions and all. So, my question is, if I'm reading this correctly, the real crux that this comes down to, is it an interpretation of, do you have to be complete by the deadline or just have begun the final phase by the deadline? Am I accurate in that description of what the crux of the question of the denial versus approval is?
I'll take a shot at that. Yes, I think that's certainly one of the threshold questions. And that has to do with the interpretation of the terms of the conditional use permit and, as you state, whether the important issue under that permit is whether construction began or was completed, you know, which is the key point. There's also a lot of discussion of vested rights law, which is, I think, a separate issue under this case that may or may not frankly have bearing on the result. That is, there's an argument that, and the hearings official discusses this a little bit, that you don't get to vested rights law, you don't get to that legal interpretation if you decide that either this permit or this development basically was, met the conditions of approval. And that is, because it was begun, nothing more needs to be done. That is, you don't need result to this vested rights determination. And that incidentally gets to issues of how much investment was made in good faith by the developer, that sort of stuff. But this is solely, you know, did they do enough to satisfy the permit requirements such that they get building permits without going to the vested rights interpretation? But to back up a little bit to your question from there, yeah, I think you formulated it correctly. It gets to the issue of how do we interpret this, the conditional use permit conditions, do they mean you need to begin construction or complete it within the time?
So, which kind of leads me to, that sounds like it's a legal interpretation of a permit that was issued, not a policy question.
Well, and there is, and the folks from LMD can speak to some of the policy implications associated with this matter. And I agree, initially, though, I agree that it's a legal interpretation of how you interpret the terms of this conditional use permit or the conditions of it. But the board is going to be forced to do that fairly often. I understand your concern. The way I like to break it down is if there are matters of interpretation of state law, it makes sense to move it on to Luba and the Court of Appeals because what this board has to say about the interpretations of state law don't matter to Luba or the Court of Appeals, they're going to decide what they want. On the other hand, how this board interprets its own code provisions is very important. And the board, the Luba Board and the Court of Appeals will give this board deference as to its interpretation of its own code provisions and, in this case, potentially the conditions of approval of this permit. And a quick reference back to the hearings official's decision, which is in your packet, he makes the point that he thinks this matter is controlled by a Luba case, the name of which is, and I'll probably butcher it here, Hyde Girkin?
Hyde Girkin, yeah.
First Marion County. And on Page Five of the hearings official's decision, he, I'll just read it rather than trying to summarize it. "On consideration applicable or in case law, it appears that the right of the applicant to continue its construction plan hinges not on vested rights law, but rather on the terms and conditions of the original discretionary approval by the county." And that discretionary approval by the county, in Marion County in this case, was, I memorized, a conditional use permit similar to here. And so, what it's getting at there is, you know, what are the conditions of approval that they hear? Was the planning director and hearings official's interpretation of the conditions of approval correct or not, that the board can choose to agree with or disagree with as you see fit? And how you, and this is what the Luba case said, sort of how you interpret those provisions, as long as they're not clearly wrong, I think that's still the standard, will be given some amount of deference by Luba. So, to round that up, yeah, it's a legal interpretation, but it is one that can have significance to how the legal issue is resolved up above as well. As to the policy implications, I think there's some stuff in the packet about whether, and the appellant has argued that this is a change in county policy, that is, it's never been determined that one needs to complete construction within the timeline of a permit, just begin construction, and that what the hearings official has required here is a 180 on that policy. And whether that's truly historically been what LMD has done, for example, I will leave to, to Kent and Deanna.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think this leads me right into maybe, in a sense, asking that question. I completely understand where Commissioner Bozovich is going on this, but at the same time, you know, our staff, our planning director did give approval to this. And so, I think before making a decision, whether we hear or potentially say, you know, let's just skip it and send it to Luba, I'm kind of interested to maybe kind of find out, you know, first of all, there's obviously a disagreement that is happening here from our staff, the planning director, and from the hearings official. So, I'm trying to get my arms around that. The other piece, and that's one thing that you brought up, Andy, and I'm actually trying to, I'm going to go to it real quick and apologize here, but going to the vested interest piece of it, vested rights law. To be honest with you, I'm having a hard time getting my arms around that. I mean, I understand vested rights, but I'm not even sure why this is even put in here because hearings official clearly says it is with an excess caution and the recognition of law in this area is less than clear. So, I'm trying to figure out why, why even bring this in the first place? But anyway, maybe, Deanna or Ken, maybe if you could maybe just first of all answer or give an idea of why the approval, but then when it was sent to the hearings official, obviously, there's a disagreement, and why is there a disagreement on that? But I also want to get back to Commissioner Bozovich's piece here. Is this a policy discussion for us? Is this something that needs to be cleared up or sent to Luba? How do we need to come to grips with potentially codifying this into the future? So, if you could, I'd appreciate at least a comment, answer, or question.
Thank you, Commissioner Lichen, Commissioner Bozovich. Everything we do in land management seems to have legal implications, and therefore it results in some legal interpretations that require board guidance. But in this instance, we're really asking for some policy backing from past practice that has been substantial implementation of an authorized land use can move forward, much less if it is initiated within the timeframe of that authorization. So, this application was initiated within the timeframe, substantially implemented. The fork in the road that the hearings official is giving you is that you can say and clarify the policy that if it is initiated within the timeframe of authorization, it doesn't have to be completed. You've sanctioned your land use, and you've moved over into the building arena, and you're just dealing with the building code. You've passed land use, you've got that authorization, move forward. The other fork in that road is the hearings official saying if you are, what I'm asking for is for you to kind of clarify that, yes, you don't have to complete the project, you have to initiate the project within the approval period. But if you're not going to clarify that, then we're going down the fork of the road on vested rights. And that's the opportunity the hearings official's kind of given here, that if you're not going to clarify that position, well, then see if they make it to vested rights. And I don't think you even have to go to vested rights if you clarify your policy.
I appreciate that because I don't either. I mean, I'm looking at this, trying to figure out, why would you even bring vested rights into this in the first place? I would, I'm having an issue there right away with, and don't get me wrong, I have a tremendous amount of respect for Gary as a hearings official, I do. But, so, this helps to whether we should hear it here or kick it up, and I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. I was hoping that one of the three of you or all three of you could zero in on a question I had about these discretionary appeals to the Board of Commissioners. And some of them involved fact issues and some of them involve legal issues. And what I've heard so far is that the facts are really not in dispute, that the board doesn't have to read anything or hear from any witnesses or, in any way, try to determine what the facts are, that the facts are all agreed. But that there are some legal issues that were determined by the hearings official and that we could, if we wanted to, jump into those legal issues. Could you first clarify my statement or clarify my understanding that there really are no facts that we need to decide? We don't have to decide any facts.
Generally, I think that is correct. And the central, I think, is a little bit to what Commissioner Lichen mentioned as well as your question. I do see this as sort of a two-part case. One is, what's the import of the approval that was given and the conditions that go with it? Is it just a matter of interpreting that? And if that's the case, why do we get into discussion of vested rights? To answer your question, once we're over here invested rights, yeah, it's a very fact-specific analysis. And it's the sort of analysis that the hearings official went through, in essence, in the alternative, I think is the way to read his opinion, that is, assume, you know, here's what I, the hearings official, think is the answer with respect to how you interpret this permit, assuming I'm wrong and the permit didn't expire, here's my analysis of whether or not the applicant had a vested right, notwithstanding the expiration of that permit. And then he runs through the vested rights analysis, which gets to the investment made, the good faith, that sort of things, even gets to ratios of how much money was spent and what the total cost would be, et cetera, et cetera. As I say, very fact-specific and, in my opinion, probably not a great reason for the board to get involved in that analysis unless you look at that and say, that's crazy. What he did is, makes no sense, and we want a chance to reevaluate the numbers. There's nothing that prevents you from looking at the facts, the numbers in this case, but nothing in my mind cries out that you do it in this case.
So, I guess I'm hearing, yes, there are no fact issues. And then the issue is, on the law part, is that there are state law issues and there are local ordinance issues, art ordinance issues. And the hearings official has to decide, you know, what the interpretation of the county code would be, and the hearings official has to make interpretations of what the state law is. The part that can be appealed beyond the board level really is the state because they get to decide what the state law means. My point is, the hearings official's already made a decision about what the county code is, and it's discretionary, but it's certainly not going to be anything different than what the hearings official did. The hearings officials made an interpretation of the county ordinance, that's why we have hearings officials. If we didn't want it, we wanted all the appeals to come to the board from a denial or an approval by a planning director's decision, we could do that. But that's why we have the hearings official. So, I don't hear some of these other criteria of countywide significance. I've never heard this issue come up before, so I'm not sure it's a countywide issue. It's been determined by the hearings official. If we say we don't want to review this for a variety of reasons, the parties are free to appeal the case if they don't like the decision of the hearings official.
Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, thank you. While I'm listening to the conversation and reading the material, I would support hearing this because, as a commissioner that has a lot of land use applications in my district, I would like to, you know, give direction on the policy. And if Luba decides that that's not within the law, that's great, but there's a lot of things that the law doesn't specifically state that our policy allows us to make decisions on. And I think that once an application has been approved through the land use and moves over to the building side, I don't think it's right to have to go back through that land use process, especially if they're going to build what they had original approval on. So, in that instance, I think it's worthy of merit, and it is of significance to the entire county. And I do think that if we set the precedence on our policy, that hopefully, if it is appealed, Luba will recognize that we have the choice to make that decision.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick follow-up. Commissioner Stewart, appreciate that. I would support that as well. And I'm going to remind this board that at one time, our staff did approve a conditional use permit for a certain winery. And that was appealed, denied, had to go through a legislative process, actually, to be fixed. And now, certain wineries that size now can be full-service. Let's not forget, five years ago, that could not happen. And I think what's the challenge here is, I think what you're going to see is continuing to see these different ideas, processes coming to the county. It's no different than the wedding venue type of businesses that we're going through right now that we're going to have to deal with, the legislature's going to have to deal with, land use is going to have to deal with. Organists change dramatically and will continue to change. And so, I would support the board hearing this. If it ends up getting kicked up again, I think that at least we've made a case of one way or another, obviously, we don't know what the outcome will be, but that maybe there are some certain fixes that need to be taken care of, whether legislatively or whatever the case may be. So, I would support that. Thank you.
So, I have another question for staff. Can you point to the exact section in OAR 6600330130 that the hearings official notes that we mimicked exactly in our condition number one of the original special use permit? Because that particular piece of OAR is 21 pages long, and I'm trying to find the language. And haven't been, because if we did mimic exact language that is referenced, and that's actually, it's a minimum standards applicable to the Schedule of Permitted and Conditional Uses section of OAR there, if that language exactly mimics state language, we're talking about interpreting state law, not interpreting a county permit. I mean, if that language was set out by the state and we mimicked it because that's what the state says we're allowed to do for a conditional use permit, whether or not somebody starts or completes and all that under that section of OAR is a state law interpretation, not a county law, county policy.
So, did you say OAR 660-033-0130?
Yes.
I think that's captured in the condition of approval number one from the 2004 permit.
Correct.
And one... And one C, applicant states reasons that prevented the applicant from beginning or continuing the development within the approval period. But without having that OAR right in front of me, I'm not really sure of the connection.
Yeah, I think in the, the actual conditional use permit, you know, has, you know, that is valid for two years, date of final approval, one-year extension up 12 months if, and then has a list. But if you go back to the denial from the hearings official, he notes that that condition is almost the exact same language from this piece of OAR, and I was trying to match those two up. This is where I kind of get into, is this an interpretation of state law and, or is this a Board policy decision as to what constitutes, you know, is it that they're progressing and within that two years, it's enough to hold on to their conditional use permit, or do they have to be complete by that two years? It was obvious that there was no request for an extension according to the facts that are not arguable. The applicant did not make a request for an extension. So for the extra 12 months, so we're, you know, this is all about whether things happen in the two years or not, and whether progressing on the first two phases was enough to hold on to the third phase of approval. You know, I'm concerned you're, we're being asked to interpret a state law, which just sets us up to be appealed to Luba anyway. I have a similar concern that Commissioner Sorensen has. And Mr. Chair, wouldn't hearing this on the record actually give us the ability to answer your question? I'm just, I'm concerned with, you know, wasting the applicant's time.
Yeah, and I'll note, perhaps in reaction to your question and Commissioner Sorensen's statement that, you know, obviously, there's nothing that prohibits the Board from interpreting state law. And if you think the hearings official misinterpreted state law, then frequently this Board has decided to take the matter and reinterpret or interpret state law differently. That's part of the job. What that means is when it goes up above to Luba, the Court of Appeals, there's no deference given, they may second guess the Board's interpretation. So it's all a matter of how much deference or consideration the appellant bodies give to this Board's interpretation. If it's of its own code, then it gets much more deference. If our code simply parrots state law rule or statute, then there won't be that deference given, it'll just be as if the Luba's interpreting state law. I haven't tracked through the OAR entirely to answer your question, I'm wondering whether the relevant provision is on page four of the hearings official's decision, which is 6600330140, where there's the language at the bottom that talks about it being void two years from the date of the final decision if development action is not initiated in that period. That language to me would seem to indicate that as long as, as the development was initiated, had begun, that it's okay, that the applicant, the developer's done what they needed to do within that two-year time period, which is inconsistent, of course, of what the hearings official decided. So I haven't really figured out where the discrepancy is between that language and the hearings official's decision, frankly. The other complicating factor in this case is it's a multi-phase development, where it seems to me the facts indicate that phase one, one of the buildings was completed, the others were not yet. Question is, do you consider the total project being initiation of the project or development at that time, or whether completion of one and not the others sort of separates out this into different parts, such that you can say one is over and done with, but there was no initiation of phases two and three, and therefore, nothing was done within the permit time, et cetera. So I will give you, it's complicated. The last bit I'll mention, I guess, is again, that Luba case where the question really boiled down to the Board of Commissioners, Marion County Board of Commissioners' interpretation of their conditional use permit, and whether that interpretation of the permit was in spite of the deference or not. And I think that's the issue that's presented to this Board potentially in elect to hear is how this Board chooses to interpret the language of that conditional use permit, which is, you know, it's not crystal clear. That is, the conditions of use don't say you must initiate within two years, they don't say you must complete within two years or begin within two years, but again, that's a matter of interpretation.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff or coming up on at times certain?
Mine's very brief. I'm just trying to simplify things a little bit in my mind. The hearings official is at odds with the planning director on this one. And by hearing it as a Board, we'll have a chance to sort out the difference of opinion between the hearings official and the planning director without kicking it up to Luba.
It still could go to Luba.
It still could go to Luba, but it gives us an opportunity to hear more, to make a decision as a Board, whether it's a policy decision or, whether it's a unique environmental resource, whatever it may be, it gives us an opportunity to clarify that a little bit at this level before sending it to the state.
It certainly clarifies what the county position on the matter is.
It seems like a, seems like an appropriate movement, appropriate direction for me. So thank you.
Commissioner Stewart. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval order 15-9-29-09 in the matter of electing to hear an appeal of the hearing official's decision denying a request for a verification of non-conforming use to allow placement of a manufactured dwelling for student housing as phase three of a 2004 land use decision. 509PA 04-06222, approving a school building and two dormitories in an exclusive farm use zone.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion to the motion. Commissioner Farr.
Just very briefly, in this time, we have an 11 o'clock. You know, I would presume that the hearings official and the planning director both are accustomed to interpreting state laws and both know what they're talking about, know what they're doing, so this gives us an opportunity to kind of step in and take a look as an elected five-member Board of Commissioners. So I'm in favor of that motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion to the motion?
I'll just mention that I understand that our, like our previous hearing, we can, it can always end with us moving to not make a local decision and recommend it go to Luba with no comment on the hearings official's decision like we did in the previous one. So with that in mind, I'm going to support the motion.
One other item, that's correct, and one other item I'll mention quickly is that you may decide at the end of the hearing to limit what you speak to. In other words, if you just want to deal with a permit and not address the vested rights analysis, you can do that, you just simply need to bifurcate it and uphold the HOs or not on the other hand.
So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1. Thank you. So moving on to county council, we have an 11 o'clock time sorting, item 7B, order number 15092910 in the matter of approving renewal of purchased insurance policies and delegating authority to the risk manager to sign the renewed, renewal documents and update of the current flood and earthquake review. And we have Lisa Lacy, our risk manager, and I believe if you'll introduce your guest for us.
Yes, this is Ron Grayville. He's the managing partner of Brown and Brown Northwest, our agent of record. As you know, Marion County is self-insured for up to $1 million for general liability claims and up to $500,000 for workers' compensation claims. The county purchases policies for multiple coverages and includes crime, property, flood, aviation, and excess general liability and workers' comp. The majority of these policies expire October 1st. Ron's going to take us through the renewal that they've proposed and answer any questions you have.
Thanks for having me. I think what triggered my attendance today was a, was a report, and I'm just going to look sideways so we can all read together, was a report that we did for, for staff regarding your exposure to flood, to catastrophic events, to flood and to earthquake. A real in-depth dive, sorry for pun, on flood, your flood exposure. So I think that's what triggered my, my attendance here. So please ask any questions today as I go through the analytics and the issues. So this is who we are. I've been doing this for about 35 years. We insure around 150 public entities in Oregon, including quite a few in this, in this area. So next, next slide. So just a quick overview of your property exposures and property insurance coverage. You have total insured values of around 310 million, that's real property and business property, mobile equipment, et cetera. You're currently insured with Travelers, $100,000 per occurrence deductible, 25 million in earthquake limit, and then the next phrase in parentheses, we'll come back to. But that's your PML, is a probable maximum loss. We can now quantify your exposure to earthquake loss. It's called RMS, Risk Management Systems, it's 13.0, it's current version, all the insurance, major insurance companies use it to put up their earthquake capacity. We do, do it for you as well, and we've done that. Interestingly enough, for a 500-year event, your probable maximum loss for earthquake here is under 10 million. Now, now that's a model, okay? Models are wrong. Models were wrong in Hurricane Katrina. So we look at, when I look at these models, I take a very conservative view. You notice the limit is higher than your probable maximum loss, so that's for a reason, because I don't believe in models. The only way to get a real, the only way to get, and bear with me, a real hard, you know, hard handle on what your true exposure to earthquake loss is to have an engineering study. The engineers can go out and look at each building, really look at that, that probability for earthquake loss, and it's a much better study than what we do with, you know, industry-wide approach. So that's a real world view of your PML, okay? More importantly, flood. So you have $5 million in coverage for flood zone A, $10 million flood zone B, your flood deductible is 500,000, and your earthquake deductibles are 5%, 100,000 are minimum. So we'll touch on all these points as we go along here today, but that's a snapshot. So have you questions? So let's talk about quake, I probably already did, but your total value exposed again, 30 million. Again, your 500-year event probable maximum loss is a little over $8 million, surprising to me. So what that means is, is a .2% chance that one or more events will cause at least 8 million plus in ground-up loss any given year. That's the probability. You have 25 million earthquake insurance limit, and your deductible is 5%. So you might, so you might ask, if you have a loss higher than 25 million, what happens? Well, this traditional insurance contract would not respond, and you'd be dealing with FEMA, talking to FEMA for the additional, additional loss. And I don't know if you, if any of you, if commissioners have experience with FEMA? We do. It's not an insurance policy. You don't get replacement costs, and it's going to take a while to get funded. So I think some of you probably do have experience with FEMA. So this is, this is just a snapshot, this is about a 75-page report, but this is a snapshot of the return period, periods on the left, and the actual metrics. So you see ground-up loss, a 500-year return period, a little bit over 8 million, $8 million in expected loss. So more interesting to me is flood. So you have $62 million in value in flood zone A, another roughly 50, is that right? Roughly, in excess of 50 million in flood zone B. Your coverage is 5 million in flood zone A. And it's been that way for a long time, and the reason why is insurance carriers are really hesitant to put up the limit for a competitive price. And we can find, we can find the limit. Prior to about four days ago, that price for additional flood zone limit was between 15 and 20,000 dollars per million. So if you wanted to buy $6 million of coverage in flood zone A, it would cost you another 15 to 20,000, $20,000, which is really expensive. And you have FEMA. I mean, it's not perfect, but you have FEMA, and by the way, if you don't know this, new FEMA rules were published, I think it's June 29, 2015. And those new FEMA rules do require that you carry coverage before you go to FEMA. That, that is a big change in the way FEMA funds natural disasters. So you have emergency planning department here, that may not be the right title for your department, but most people are all over it, at least you have the statute, or the rules, I'm sorry, the rules. It's a big change. So we're encouraged you to have an ongoing relationship and discussions and conversations with FEMA about how that might work, because you have so, such a high exposure in flood zone A here. So the deductible $500,000 on your flood zone A coverage, that's because the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, will provide flood insurance in flood zone A up to $500,000. You currently have flood zone A properties that are not insured with NFIP. So one of our recommendations is that you insure your flood zone A properties with NFIP to satisfy this deductible requirement. It's pretty inexpensive insurance. So the 15 to 20,000 are quote for additional flood limit, we talked to really all domestic markets, including Lloyd's. So it's worth discussing the National Flood Insurance Program process, because you can't just go out and get a quote from us as your agent of record or broker and bind it, it's not the way it works. You provide elevation certificates, you have an application, you apply, you get a quote back, you decide to bind, you send a check, and there's a waiting period. It's a 30, it's your 30 or 60-day waiting period before you can bond. So if it starts to rain, and you want to buy more flood zone A, it doesn't work that way with the National Flood Insurance Program. It's a governmental program, it's not a commercial insurance program, you can't control the correctness of that at all. So just realize, there's a big lag when you want to buy national flood insurance protection. So I talked about the new FEMA rules, and we just did get a quote option in three, four days ago from a program, you'll see on the far right there, named PEPUP. And PEPUP is Public Entity Property Insurance Program, and it's, it's interesting as far as insurance goes, so bear with, bear with us. PEPUP is the largest single insurance placement in the United States. It is one, it's government-only property protection, it's active in 48 states, has 4,500 different governmental insurers. It's a very complex layered London program. It's huge, it's a monster. But they are able to put up more flood zone A for you if you want to buy it instead of one.
Can you pull that microphone closer to you?
You bet.
Yep, thanks.
So if you elected to buy higher flood zone A limit, it's available for a pretty competitive price. I was very surprised at the price. You're under 7,000 per million versus 15 to 20,000 per million with standalone flood protection. So that's something for you to consider. It's really a choice of, do you want to have a commercial insurance contract where it's a known quantity, if flood, they're going to pay, or do you want to go through FEMA for the excess loss? But I was happy to find the quote, that you would end up moving away from Travelers and putting your entire property insurance program with PEPUP. Again, a layered London program versus a domestic carrier, it's another, another decision point, if you'd like to divide the higher, the higher flood. I can't break the higher flood away and just buy that on its own, they won't allow that. So moving on to your liability protection, you're carrying a per occurrence limit of 10 million with a $1 million self-insured retention. You've enjoyed flat premiums over the past seven or eight years, even with the Oregon Torque Claims Act limits increasing, so it's been a good result. You have coverage for general liability, autos, employment practices, publicly, you know, law enforcement liability, including sexual abuse and molestation. So it's a very broad, broad combined coverage for them. And there is coverage in place now for the helicopter, a very recent placement on our Workers' comp, of course, you're self-insured. You do buy excess workers' compensation coverage over a $500,000 per occurrence retention. You have a statutory limit. That means- That means there really is no limit. It's the only insurance policy I know of that has no limit. It's theoretically unlimited. You've had a significant pricing increase this year. The excess workers' comp market is very unhealthy. There are only a few carriers that are willing to provide competitive limits. Carriers are very worried about presumptive causation in Oregon, getting a stronger, a stronger foothold beyond firefighters. So their, you know, supply is, supply is weak, demand is consistent, so prices are going up. Then you also carry crime insurance, $1 million per occurrence, with $25,000 deductible covering, covering the bullet points that you have in front of you there. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, gentlemen. I'm not sure, Lisa, I guess, action items, still questions for, for Stafford or Mr. Gregor?
Could any of the four of you give us an overview of the process that led to today? Was there a committee of the board, or was there internal review, or just, you know?
I'm not aware of what initiated today.
Just because it was going to expire, we asked the broker to go out and get his prices and then bring it to you to review.
Okay, so, so, and that expires, like, soon?
October 1st.
Yeah, okay. So, we really have to approve this? Okay. So what's the process for reviewing that decision? Like, to give us some time to, to go into some options? Because it doesn't sound like there are really any options today.
There are, the staff, staff has, has some options, they've considered options. The new, the new decision point is the competitive excess flood limits that we've found. I think that's really the critical decision point. Our process starts about 120 days ago. And if you want a presentation like this 30 days before expiration in the future, we can certainly give that to you. The timing is just compressing.
I'll just speak for myself. I, I think that the presentation was great, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with, apparently, there's really no reason for us to be even discussing this today, because it's really something we have to do, because the insurance is expiring, right?
Well, we can choose to not insure.
Yeah, okay. So, so would you recommend that?
No.
No, okay. So I, I would say that is not really an option.
Commissioner, that's not her call, of course.
No, no, I understand it, but it's not, what I'm saying is, there's a recommendation, you better approve it because the insurance is expiring. Oh, and by the way, you do have an option of not approving it. We don't recommend that, but you can approve it. So I just, you know, in my own life, in my own business life, I don't like to make decisions in this forced fashion. So I'll just register that as a, as a concern, and for the next time. And maybe what we ought to do is, in two months, we ought to have a presentation about this and really go into some of the options, so that we in fact could have, in a year or whenever, when, when does this current, when, assuming we approve this today, when would we then more likely review this?
Well, we typically start 120 days before expiration, but we can have a conversation anytime.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever's convenient for you.
So I would say, you know, six months out, that would give us an additional, you know, 60 days in there to ask these questions and schedule it and all that. So, I do appreciate the presentation.
So I just want to make note, there is actually an option available to the board today. We can approve the renewal with the coverage as previously established, or we can approve the renewal, raising the workers' comp self-insured retention from 500,000 to 600,000, which is the recommendation of staff. So it's not like there isn't something in front of the board to make a decision of today. And we can also increase and decrease coverage amounts, but I think, you know, that's, that's, there is some, at least in the board, in the board memo, there is some options there. Commissioner Lichen?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just was going to point the same thing out. So appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm looking at the policy term, October 1st is when the policy takes effect, through, for one year. And I'm, I'm just looking down the schedule, and property is about flat, property terrorism about flat, crime about flat, excess casualty is about flat, excess casualty terrorism about flat, that is, Commissioner Bosovich just pointed out, the excess workers' compensation, including mandatory terrorism, is where the approximately $75,000 increase, and that's where our decision point is right now, if, if there is a decision point.
Yeah, we comment on that real quickly. Their, it's, exposure times rate, your payroll is up significantly, I think from roughly $8 million to $93,000, if I remember the numbers correctly. And that, I think it was, was a percentage increase, I don't have the number off the top of my head. Plus, your rate is up, your rate is up significantly. Combination of the two.
I understand. And so our premium is, last year it was 546, this year it's 625. That's, that's the bullet that we're taking right now, is to approve the 625,419 premium. I'm, I'm reading it right up. It's, let's see, what is it called? Page 11 of the package.
I must have a different copy, it's not on my page 11.
Okay. As, well, it says the total premium, 2014-15 was 546,952, 2015-16 premium is 625,419. So the motion that we would make would be to approve that amount. And, as Lisa said, I really, you know, I really trust the work that you do, and while we're having a short discussion on it here, I would guess this is not the first time you've thought about it.
No.
No, you've been thinking about it all year long. Okay, I'm, I'm confident in that decision-making process, thank you.
So I, I have a few questions, and it's, just so that we can put some of this in the context. When you talk about the 500-year event, or the .2% in any given year, is the ground acceleration duration represented by that event?
Yes.
Similar to the, what we would experience under the Cascadia subduction zone event?
Absolutely, it is, it is. This analysis is geographically specific to street and town, and building construction type. So the amplification from the ground combined with the construction type is all built in.
Yeah, because there's been significant discussion of that, and we all understand that that's actually, it's the 300-year event for this area, possibly, you know. Historically, it's been the 300-year event, so if it wasn't, if the 500-year event wasn't mimicking that Cascadia full, full fault subduction event, you know, it wouldn't, wouldn't be matching up with my idea of what our true risk is.
Right, so 500-year probabilities, as shown exhibit, are more conservative than the 300-year.
Right, right. But that's probably our probable maximum event, actually, in this area.
I, I would hate to comment on that. An engineer, again, an engineer said it would be a great thing to have, to pick that PML.
Yeah, so just wanted to clarify that. The other thing, there's a large difference between the insured buildings we have in Flood Zone A versus what the actual risk of damage is in Flood Zone A. I'm noting, you know, we have such, quite a bit of our Cervu campus is in Flood Zone A. The actual elevation is about a foot on most of those buildings. It's not going to cause the entire structure to, to suddenly disappear. We're not talking about that sort of flood damage, we're talking about carpets and, and who knows what else might happen during that, that, that event, including even some of our Flood Zone B. So I'm not as enamored with the idea of trying to spend 15,000 or 20,000 for every million over 10 million. I think we're actually well within our, our limits in risk by staying at the 10 million maximum flood insurance. I don't know if that's, if you have any comment on that, or you agree or disagree? Because it's kind of like they just, you showed in Flood Zone A, it's the total value that's in Flood Zone A, but that doesn't really reflect what the actual water levels are at that building for Flood Zone A.
I think that's a great, that's a great point. We, what we do do, however, is overlay the Flood Zone, Flood Zone maps onto Google Earth, so you can't tell exactly where the flood zones are defined on your properties. And staff has that, if you're, if you're curious about that. My only fear is that you have 62 million A and 5 million limit. In our profession, I want to bring it out, have discussion, have you make an over decision, understand what your options are for funding, commercial insurance versus FEMA, and understand the implications of that. So you know your properties much better than I do, but I just want to have that discussion.
I mean, most of that value is either at Cervu or the Lane Events Center, and both those cases, we're talking about very shallow, deep flood zones, and, and tending to be backwater flood zones too.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, I'm a civil engineer by trade, so.
Great. I'm, I'm glad you are.
I've done flood studies for FEMA, you know, run the Act 2 and the whole bit, so.
Okay, great, great.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm not as concerned. And the other issue about flood, you know, when you talk about total, you know, within the flood zone, what may be a flood for our Cervu campus may not even touch Lane Events because it's a completely different watershed, different water course. You know, the size of this county, the chance that all 62 million of our property will be touched by a flood event is pretty rare. I mean, you know, you look at some of our flood events across the county, there were streams that did not get out of flood stage, where others went completely out of flood stage.
In '96?
Yeah. Yeah, '96, we had some that stayed within banks because they, the flood control facilities, the core, kept them within banks, even though there's a flood zone there. So, I'm pretty comfortable with that. What I, what I would kind of wonder, and this is more for Lisa, is what are we doing about the NFIP? Are we progressing on getting that 500, that 500,000 covered under NFIP?
We can. We have three properties that have it now, but if you want us to go out and get it on the other Flood Zone A properties, we can start that.
Is that, does that need board action to initiate, or is that administrator's decision and within consultation with risk management?
Probably administrator.
Okay. Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, going back, talking about the historical levels, so the flood of '96, I think that was classified as a 30-year flood.
140.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know.
The Mohawk it was, but, but I was just curious, because Peace Health, when it was built, actually the infill was for the 500-year flood, and on that part of the McKenzie was not a 500-year flood. It was significantly less, and so, which was...
Came close to 100-year for McKenzie public influence.
Might have been. But, but I know most of the damage was done from the McKenzie when it went into the Willamette, then up, up north. And so, Willamette here was actually fairly spared because of the huge snowfall that, we had a significant snowfall, then it rained, warmed, and lost about four feet of the snowpack in days.
Yikes.
And it's caused so much of that significant rainfall. That was the last significant FEMA event I can actually remember here, unless there was one.
We had the Suez Law in Mapleton more recent.
On the, yeah, that's true, on the coast.
Just points out how, how localized flooding events can get.
Yeah.
Right.
And those have been, just wouldn't have lasted, what, five years? Yeah. All right.
Well, I was happy to bring you a lower, you know, lower-cost alternative for future consideration, and happy to talk about it more as, as you see fit.
No, I, I appreciate the information, it was good information, and want to say thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments for... Well, I really appreciate the study. I read, as you can tell, I read it.
Good.
And I do believe what we're looking at today is actually a reasonable amount of coverage, and, and I really trust our risk management team in setting that coverage up in consultation with our, with our carriers and consultants. So, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stewart? Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of Order 15-9-29-10 on the matter of approving renewal of purchased insurance policies and delegating authority to the risk manager to sign the renewal documents and update the, of the current flood and earthquake review.
Second.
It's been moved in second at any discussion to the motion. I'll just make one real quick note. The board memo notes that there's no health effects in this, in this item. I would disagree with that, because our, our preparation to deal with the risk involved here and recover, and this is about resiliency, has huge health effects. You know, our ability to cover those damages and replace facilities quickly, excuse me, really affects people's health. And if we're, you know, we're talking about the Cervu campus for, you know, this is where our, you know, we house our at-risk youth and all that, there is a health impact to how quickly we get that back online. And, and having insurance to do those things has an ultimate health impact. So I just wanted to note that, for the record, that I kind of disagree with the board memo there, that you might want to think about risk actually, you know, risk prevention and risk management actually has a long-term health impact in our ability to be resilient in the face of a disaster. Any other discussion in the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So, jumping backwards a little bit, were there any announcements from County Council today?
Just, oh, County Council, I'm sorry. No, no, Mr. Chair, as far as I know, nothing from our office. You've got the emergency item, which Mr. Chaney took care of earlier, and no exact session scheduled for today, so.
Great, thank you. Then we'll move forward to item A, which is County Administration announcements.
Right.
And I want to welcome Mr. Rikoff, who's substituting for County Administrator today as acting county administrator.
Yes, I am. So, Chair Bosovich, and members of the Board of County Commissioners, you perhaps have noticed that I am not County Administrator McRyskey. He is in Seattle for the better part of the week at the annual International City and County Managers Association Conference. He should be back in the office on Thursday.
I wouldn't call Seattle the better part of the week.
Well, the email at this point is relatively quiet, which is a very good sign on both ends, I think. I did want to thank you on behalf of Sheriff Trapp, Deputy Olson, and his family for your kind thoughts and prayers as he continues to recover. We ask that those thoughts and prayers continue over the coming days. And that's it.
Any questions for the acting administrator? Seeing none, then we'll move on to Commissioner's business. Any announcements from Commissioners? Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. I'd just like to welcome the 2nd Battalion of the 162nd Infantry back to town. Had a stand-down ceremony last Friday. Our badge, this is my unit that I served in, the infantry unit I served in, it says on the badge, "First to assemble." In this case, they were also the last to dismiss. So they, they're home from Afghanistan after their fourth tour of duty overseas, and, and I'd like to welcome them home. It was a great stand-down ceremony at the fairgrounds, it lasted pretty much all day long. Not only did the, we welcomed the 2nd of the 162 home and had the stand-down ceremony for them, but a lot of homeless veterans received services from a lot of different providers at the fairgrounds on that day. We had a lot of the local nonprofits were given care packages, clothing, socks, various things that people are going to need to get ready for the winter, and we're all preparing for the winter for not just homeless veterans, but for the homeless men, women, and children who are facing a long, potentially cold, and we're all hoping wet, but people who are living on the streets don't necessarily hope for wet winter. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Mr. Rikoff, you'd already mentioned about Deputy Olson, but I just wanted to also say thank you to, to the Sheriff's Department for keeping us informed. That was a pretty intense evening in Cottage Grove, specifically, they didn't apprehend the individual, I think, until about 2:30 a.m., so there was a lot going on. And I, and I really want to say thank you to all the participating agencies. There was multiple Cottage Grove, State Police, other agencies that were involved in, in that effort. So thank you to really working together and, and acting quickly, and thank the Lord that Deputy Olson is nowhere short of ten years, so I appreciate that. And then I wanted to share with the board, and I'm not sure if you are aware, but on October 16th, at the, of in Portland, at the Oregon Chapter of American Planning Association, Lane County, and I believe staff, is going to be receiving an award for the professional achievement in planning, and specifically for the Goshen Regional Employment and Transition Plan, the GREAT Plan. So, I hope to be in attendance, and it's kind of neat to be recognized for achievement that doesn't come along very often, and I think maybe this is the first time. that doesn't come along very often, and I think maybe this is the first time ever, so we've seen a goal exception of this magnitude. So, thank you, staff, and well-deserved.
Any other announcements from the board?
Chair, I forgot to mention one thing.
Last week, Ms. Shannon Miller, our, our performance auditor, and I had our first Meet the Auditor Town Hall, I guess is the best way to call it, and we had it at Malabon Elementary School. I mentioned Malabon earlier, we had it in the library of the brand-new elementary school. Ms. Miller answered lots of questions, and the next day had an opportunity to go onto one of our local radio stations, KUGN, and discuss the meeting of the night before. I know that upcoming, she has four more meetings inside of, inside of Lane County for people to have an opportunity to meet our new performance auditor. Thank you.
So, that'll lead me into my announcements. Holding a Meet the Auditor event this Thursday on October first at the Sayus Law Public Library, we're actually holding it two times to make sure we can cover those folks that can't drive at night. We're having one at three o'clock at, in the Bromley Room, and then for those folks that work during the day, we are holding another one at six in the evening at the Bromley Room there. In addition, I'll be doing a couple of community conversations in Mapleton and Florence at ten in the morning, and then at twelve-thirty, and, and if anyone wants to see more about that, they can either look me up on Facebook or drop me an email on the times and places. In addition, I'm going to be in Florence tomorrow afternoon at the Justice Center at three o'clock. Judge Cindy Cable is retiring after twenty-four years, serving as a justice court judge, and we're, I'll be there to present something on behalf of the commissioners to her and, and Lane County, and we wish her well in her retirement. And I'd also like to note that, you know, Thursday being October first is also the beginning of Domestic Violence Prevention Month, and as we all think about that, and, you know, and what we can do to help out with that. Lots of interesting things going on. Spent some time with the Public Safety Coordinating Council Budget Committee yesterday, talking specifically about our grant for the Justice Reinvestment Grant Program and having a batter intervention program as part of that grant. So, it'll be interesting to see what, how that, was it first pushed back in the state, and we're pushing it back into the state to see if they'll approve that portion of our grant. And then finally, on a, on a little bit more happy note, Sunday's the Junction City Lions Chicken Barbecue. So, come out and get a really good chicken. Cheap. Any other announcements from commissioners? Seeing none, how about agenda team requests and work session requests?
Mr. Chair, I don't know of the presentation that we had this morning, but the offer by Joe to work with staff to, to write a request to the state, I would like to see if I have the administrator look at that and he deems appropriate to engage in that request.
Well, I'll add my physical acquiescence to that. Any other head nods, or, I got, so I have more than three head nods, so I think that'll be an assignment to staff to put on future, actually not somewhat the agenda team request, but just a request of the administrator to assist Mr. Kasewick.
Kasewick.
Kasewick, yeah. With his request to the state for additional data. Any other work session or agenda team requests? Seeing none, then we'll move on to review of assignments. Any, I didn't note any particular assignments other than that last one that you just made, Commissioner Stewart. Were there any other assignments from today? I think there was one request to look into the NFIP flood insurance program for all of our buildings possibly. Maybe get a brief report back during administrator announcements on that.
There was no official vote on this, but at least three members did mention an interest in having Alex Kyler work with HACSA regarding the reconfiguration of the administrative fee charges from Housing, Urban and Development, and that there was an interest in including that in advocacy within the United Front effort. So, I don't know if that was formal, but at least three of you mentioned it during your comments.
Yeah, I guess we could repeat that request here because that was the Housing Authority Board versus the county commissioners, but I think the, the desire that was expressed by commissioners that sit on the Housing Authority Board was that, that Mr. Kyler worked with, with the Housing Authority on that particular legislative issue and maybe report back to what the board might be able to do to help. And I think there was three head nods to that. I'm, I'm seeing at least three sitting here, myself and Commissioner Lichen and Commissioner Stewart, so. Any other assignments? We don't have need for executive session. Is there any other business for the board today? Seeing none, then we are adjourned, and I will remind folks that we have a work session tentatively scheduled next Wednesday, so don't book Wednesday on your calendar, Wednesday morning. So, we are adjourned.